Welcome to B News Weekly. I'm Phil Gallagher along with Tad Stefanak, acting director in for Rich Hosford, Robert Paris and John Vias reporting, Chris Flaherty with the Election Center report, Peter Brown with the weather, Gretchen Carey with Community Calendar and Anthony Matos with Sports. Thank you for joining us. The ballots have been cast and the results are in from the annual town election. We go now to B News reporter Chris Flaherty in our Election Center for a post-election night update.
Hello and welcome back to the B News Election Center. The votes have been tallied and the results are in for the annual town election. In the highly contested race for school committee, there were three candidates for two open seats. Incumbent Christine Monaco was challenged by newcomers Melissa Massardo and Jeremy Brooks. A close race ended with Monaco being reelected to her seat and Massardo winning the open seat vacated by longtime committee member Tom Murphy, who did not seek reelection this year. Melissa Massardo led with 1,621 votes, followed by Monaco with 1,479 votes, and Jeremy Brooks went home with 1,225 votes. During BCAT's live election night coverage, Christine Monaco expressed her thanks for the community's continued support.
Today I was just overwhelmed with the people that came out and it was so exciting to see such support. And there was so much that went into this campaign and so many people and I just, there's so many people to thank, but I'll just say my family, my so many friends and all the people that worked on the campaign.
Melissa Massardo also spoke on her excitement to join the committee.
I'm really excited just to join the committee. I've met all of the other committee members throughout this process, so I'm really just looking forward to getting to know them better and start learning about what it really means to be a member of the school committee and just diving in with both feet.
The race for Board of Health also saw three candidates running for two open seats, including incumbent Dr. Ed Weiner and challengers Janice Cohen and Gail Demore. Dr. Wayne Saltzman, who served on the board for 15 years, did not seek reelection. Dr. Weiner won reelection with 1,641 votes, followed by newcomer Demore with 1,314 votes, and Cohen walked away with 1,118 votes. Although the race for Select Board was not contested, incumbent Nick Priest was elected to his second term and newcomer and former Planning Board member Micah Speho won the seat left open by Select Board member Bob Hogan. Hogan decided to step down from the Select Board after 12 years of service. Micah Speho's election is noteworthy as he is the first Asian-American member of the Select Board. On election night, he referenced Augie Grace, who was an inspiration to him and his campaign.
Growing up as a young boy in Burlington, I always looked up to Augie Grace. And Augie Grace was an African-American who was president of his class at BHS. He then became on the school committee, he chaired the school committee, and then he went on to become state rep for Burlington. And Augie, as a young boy who looked different than the kids, I looked up to Augie. And I reached out to Augie recently for advice and it is so amazing to know that today is Augie's birthday and it means so much to me to be elected to the Select Board on Augie's birthday. So happy birthday, Augie. Thank you for your advice and thank you, BCAT, for having us.
You can find the full results for this year's town election as well as our full coverage from election night in the Election Center page on our website. From the B News Election Center, this is Chris Flaherty. Back to you in the studio.
As always, following a town election, town boards, committees and commissions are reorganized. The Select Board saw changes in the stepping down of 12-year Select Board member Bob Hogan. Micah Speho, who ran uncontested for the empty seat, filled Hogan's spot. Nick Priest was unanimously elected by fellow board members to the position of chair with Mike Runyon being voted in as the vice chair. There was also movement with the school committee. 27-year committee member Thomas Murphy stepped down with newcomer Melissa Massardo winning the seat left by Murphy and incumbent Christine Monaco holding her spot. Catherine Bond was nominated for and elected to the position of School Committee Chair by a vote of the committee. Carl Foss was nominated and voted into the School Committee Vice Chair position. If recent numbers are any indication, the end of COVID-19 pandemic may not be as near as we hope. According to the latest data from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health released on Thursday, the 14-day average of daily incidents in Burlington was up to 20.8% on April 14th, a significant increase from a 13.6% on April 7th and the 9.8% reported on March 31st. On March 24th, Burlington's 14-day average of daily incidents was at only 7.4%. Burlington's percent positivity rate was 5.07%, up from 3.4% on April 7th and 2.63% March 31st. On March 24th, Burlington was at 2.05%. Burlington has reported a total number of 5,159 cases this week. Last week, the reported cases was 5,113 and the total number of cases on March 24th was 5,055. This is an unfortunate trend across the entire state of Massachusetts. Nearly 75% of communities in the state reported an increase in cases due to the Omicron subvariant BA2, which apparently has less of severe effects than the original COVID-19 virus. As always, health experts recommend the best way to protect yourself from coronavirus is to receive your COVID-19 vaccine and booster and continue wearing a mask and social distance when in heavily crowded areas. Ruthanne Covino, a very active 40-year resident of Burlington, 48-year resident, excuse me, passed peacefully with her family by her side at the age of 77 on April 12, 2022. Ruthanne was born in Boston. She was the daughter of the late Frank and Dorothy Fallheffer. After graduating from Medford High, Ruthanne worked as a service administrator with Balco in Medford. She and her husband Ernie lived a few years in Medford after their wedding before moving to Burlington in 1974, where they established their family's roots. They proudly raised three children and created a warm, safe home for their family. Once all their children started school, Ruthanne began working again in the medical profession, becoming an integral part of the office operations as a medical secretary at various practices, including Woven Pediatrics, Carlton Willard Village, and Dr. Red Vanney of Winchester. And later, she used her knowledge of working with insurance companies to assist seniors with the nonprofit organization Minuteman Senior Services and later on as a shine counselor in Burlington. Ruthanne was a proud resident of Burlington and participated in many civic activities of note, serving as school committee member and chair, town meeting representative, Wildwood Elementary School PTO, Marshall Simons Middle School PTO, Burlington High School PTO, also as a member of Burlington Junior Women's Club and representative to the State Federation, Fourth of July Parade Committee Co-Chairman, Town Election Poll Clerk and a member of numerous committees, including the Beeline and Disability Access. She was also an original board member on the BCAT Board of Directors when it was created. "She was fiercely loyal and did not hesitate to lend a hand, a shoulder to lean on and advocate for those who did not have a voice to be heard," her obituary reads. Happiest with a house full of family and friends, Ruthanne lived a grateful life filled with lots of love and laughter. You can read Ruthanne's full obituary at Sullivan Funeral Home's website and also find the service dates and times. Donations in her name may be made to people helping people. At Monday night's meeting of the Board of Selectmen, members of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee presented the board with a proposal to update the board's mission statement. B News reporter John Vias has more.
During a recent update with the Select Board, DEI committee member Sayed Gani presented a proposed update to the fifth bullet point of their mission statement.
The composition of the town, as all of us are aware, has changed considerably over the past three, four, five decades. And so we are proposing that the words diversity, equity, inclusion are enmeshed, if you will, into the mission statement.
Currently, the fifth bullet point reads, "To develop a sense of community in the town, to develop the soul of the community while recognizing the rich diversity of the community." The DEI proposed to move the number five bullet point to the number one slot and then to change the verbiage of the goal as follows. "Create a sense of community within the town. Embrace and engage diversity, equity and inclusion. So the soul of the community is to accept who we are and all our efforts to succeed in how we live in the diverse nature of the town." Newly appointed Select Board Vice Chair Mike Runyon spoke during discussion, commenting that the mission statement needs a more thorough review.
It seems to me that we are pandering to recent criticisms of late. A mission statement is an important document that has not been revised in perhaps 40 years. It really deserves a top to bottom review. In short, should not be focused on one topic. There are equally important goals and objectives to reflect the current times.
Newly appointed Select Board Chair and DEI committee member Nick Priest agreed with Runyon in taking a big-picture approach to the mission statement, although the whole statement was not the focus of the DEI committee.
We didn't feel it was appropriate to touch anything else within these, you know, bullet points. But this one particular bullet point that focused on the soul of the community, you know, was speaking to, you know, the notion of what DEI kind of stands for. So I agree. I think that we should take a look at the whole, the whole mission statement. Absolutely.
I'll make a motion to re-approve this draft with the exception of that duplicate bullet point for our mission statement and hopefully that's my, that's my motion.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
All right, motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
Obeying? Okay.
The new verbiage of the bullet point was approved by a 3-2 vote. The Select Board also agreed to begin working with the DEI committee on an agenda for a special open meeting regarding issues of diversity, equity and inclusion.
3-2-0, 2-0, because I can get the order right, too. We're hitting it all fronts. All right, Sayed, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
The empty Del Frisco's Grill location at 92 Middlesex Turnpike is set to become a Strega Italiano by the end of the year. Del Frisco's Grill has been closed since before the pandemic. Attorney Trish Fonzworth, along with her client Kim Dinsmore, executive vice president of restaurant operations at PPX Hospitality and proposed manager of the new restaurant, were before the Select Board to approve the transfer of the liquor license. PPX owns the Strega Restaurants, Legal Seafood and Smith Lewinsky Steakhouse and has signed a lease with the landlord of the property. Del Frisco's has agreed to transfer the liquor license to Strega Burlington LLC. Dinsmore informed the board of their plans. "We've inherited quite a space," she said. "We just want to put our Strega touches on it and move it from steakhouse to an Italian restaurant. We've got a simple remodel with some new furniture and are looking forward to embracing a new location." Dinsmore continued that it's going to be a flagship for the future growth of the brand. Strega Burlington Restaurant will see 221 inside with 82 seasonal patio seats, according to Dinsmore. BPX is also looking for mid-September to mid-November opening. Select Board members noted that they see the new Strega Restaurant as an asset to the town and voted in favor of the liquor license transfer, 5-0. Police Chief Thomas Brown and Fire Chief Michael Patterson recently shared that the Burlington Police Department and Burlington Fire Department hosted a multi-jurisdictional training exercise designed to help public safety agencies better respond to critical incidents. More than 160 first responders and individuals from 36 agencies participated in this simulation at the Burlington Mall on Sunday night, April 3rd. First responders from Burlington Police and Burlington Fire have been honing critical incident response skills since 2017, taking part in a tabletop simulation and numerous training sessions. The real-time simulation tested the agencies in areas such as effectiveness of command and control structure, ability to work and communicate effectively among multiple jurisdictions simultaneously, on-scene security, healthcare, delivery of emergency medical services to those injured, ability to adapt to rapidly changing situations and timely and accurate communications with the public and the media. Acentra, the company that facilitated the exercise, will provide an after-action report that represents or presents an overview of the simulation and recommends changes in training, policies and procedures. "It was impressive to see the communication and coordination of these agencies in responding to a worst-case scenario. These are the skills we hope we never have to use, but are nonetheless critical to develop and maintain," said Chief Brown. "I commend Deputy Chief Robert Kirchner, who served as incident commander, for his leadership and our entire team of responders for a successful training. Every step through this training has been a learning experience," Chief Patterson said. "This drill was one more step in the continuation of that education and we will grow and improve as a department as a result. The safety and security of our shoppers and employees is a top priority and we are grateful for the ability to practice our critical response plans alongside our first responders," said Justin Fieldhouse, general manager of the Burlington Mall. Chief Brown and Chief Patterson wish to thank state and federal agencies and their mutual aid partners for making the simulation a success. Chief Brown and Chief Patterson also wish to thank the management of the Burlington Mall for making facilities available for the simulation and for the decades-long support of first responders in Burlington. How do you get to Carnegie Hall? Just ask the students and instructors involved with the Burlington High School Music Department, who recently spent time in Midtown Manhattan for a performance at that historic venue. B News Director Tad Stefanak spoke to the group on their recent trip and has this report.
With practice, 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 the Burlington High School Band made it to Carnegie Hall.
In spending months and probably the last part of this year planning the trip, the thing that I actually enjoyed the most was just walking around the streets of New York City with the group as we went from place to place.
We went to see something called the Eight Bit Big Band. They were kind of like, they played video game music, but they were a jazz big band. And it was kind of like an underground jazz club. It was definitely really cool to kind of be part of that atmosphere.
Well, besides playing, I think I really liked going to the top Rockefeller Center. It was really nice. And then we went out to dinner. So that was fun.
I enjoyed the Eight Bit Big Band that we saw and also the Broadway show, Six. It was a lot of fun.
I just really enjoyed all the sightseeing, spending time with everyone, and the experience at Carnegie Hall, seeing this huge place, the amazing acoustics, one bling and stuff like that. It just felt very, a very unique experience.
The performance went fantastic. So we've been prepping for several months on this one. And it's not always the case that a group will peak at the right time and have their best performance be at the end of the cycle.
It was a little bit complex, might I say. A lot of practice, a lot of rehearsals, but eventually we got there and I think we had a really good show.
I think we performed really well. I think we definitely gave the best show that we could, especially like after such an exciting trip. I think everyone was just so amped and so it was like really giving it our all.
I think the performance went really well, better than I expected, honestly, because I think just the fact of like physically being there, huge prestigious place, already makes us feel better about how we're playing.
We nailed it. We had a great performance and took up the stage.
Mr. B worked really hard to put this all together and he got us, you know, clinicians and everyone worked really hard and I think we made it a good experience.
We've had a tough stretch of years since the pandemic and I'm really proud of this group for sticking with the program and for making this trip happen. It wasn't an easy feat, both logistically or musically, and the group just did such a great job of rising to the occasion. So I'm super proud of them, the students, the parents, the community for making it happen, and I hope people join band in the future.
From the Burlington High School Music Department, I'm B News reporter Tad Stefanak.
Congratulations to the band. The chickens are coming home to roost, literally. Chuck Carnell of Fort Westwood Street was before the Board of Health applying for a keeping of animals permit for four chickens. Associate Health Inspector Samantha Hardy performed the inspection of the property for the board on March 8th. Hardy examined abutting neighbor's lot lines and setbacks and was satisfied that Carnell has enough space in his chicken coop. Hardy informed the board that Carnell plans on composting the waste in his garden, will store the chicken feed in the basement of his home, and recommended granting the keeper of animals permit. Letters were sent to abutters of Fort Westwood Street with no response. However, Carnell informed the board he did have a neighbor come by with some concerns. After showing the neighbor the coop and explaining the rules the town have regarding chickens, the neighbor was okay with it. Board of Health Chair Ed Weiner inspected the property on his own as well. "I have no objection whatsoever," said Weiner. Dr. Weiner reiterated that roosters are not allowed in the town of Burlington. Carnell assured the board that his four chicks are female. The Board of Health approved the keeping of animals permit, 5-0. I'm surprised turkeys are allowed in the town, if you've had one gobbling underneath your window at 5:30 in the morning. The Cambridge Street Animal Hospital, located at the shops at Simons Park, plans to be, begin seeing patients in early to mid-May. Veterinarian Dr. Ray McCullough, practice manager Stephanie Saglin-Benny and head groomer Charlene McLaughlin are getting set to begin offering veterinary care to the Burlington area's household pets. The staff is originally from Concord Animal Hospital, where Dr. McCullough and Saglin-Benny saw the need in Burlington. "We noticed that a lot of new clients at Concord were coming from the Burlington area," said the doctor. "On top of that, Burlington has been my go-to for all my shopping needs." We're glad to hear that. It's just a great town to visit. Dr. McCullough trained at Tufts Veterinary School in Grafton and spent close to six years at Concord Animal Hospital. Saglin-Benny served as technician at Concord Animal Hospital. "Since the pandemic, everyone wants to have a new pet," said Saglin-Benny. "And Concord Animal Hospital would have so many new clients, we thought Burlington would be a great place for an animal hospital." As practice manager, Saglin-Benny supports all areas of the hospital's practice, training new surgical technicians and front desk staff, as well as overseeing the business administration. They also offer close to 30 years of grooming experience from groomer Charlene McLaughlin. Finally, Saglin-Benny also expressed their enthusiasm for opening Cambridge Street Animal Hospital. "We're very excited to be in Burlington. This is really a huge pride for us. We'll probably start scheduling appointments in the next few weeks, so we're very excited and happy to be in Burlington." To schedule an appointment, visit the Cambridge Street Animal Hospital website, fill out a new client form, and they will be in touch. Spring has sprung and Easter Bunny is coming right around and so are some cooler temperatures. We go now to B News weatherman Peter Brown for a look at the forecast for the holiday weekend and beyond. We'll also hear from Gretchen Carey with the Community Calendar to see what's happening in Burlington.
Well, hello everyone. This is Peter Brown with local weather for the next seven days. Here we are heading in towards the middle of April. Hard to believe that we're this far into spring and starting in our period on Friday, our average highs at this time of the year should be in the, around 60 or so, maybe the low 60s, and we're going to be about five or six degrees higher than that. So pretty nice start to our period and unfortunately, our temperature's going to take a little bit of a nosedive after that. But it looks like when we get to the end of the period on next Thursday, our average high should be in the low 60s again at that time of the year. And it looks like we may have a little bit of a warm-up by the time we get there. Looks like over the past few days here in the Burlington area, that real warm air we were expecting didn't quite materialize. Looks like we get stuck on the real cool side of the front here while western New England got the real warmth. So unfortunately, we didn't really get to partake in the real warm weather, but our time is coming, I'm sure, as we head further through spring. So as we go ahead, let's take a look at the Climate Prediction Center is calling for us here in the Burlington area over the next seven to 10 days. And unfortunately, looking at these maps, especially if you're going on vacation next week for April school vacation, looks like our temperatures have a good chance of being below normal and our precipitation chances are going to be above normal. So it looks like it's going to be a cooler, wetter period, unfortunately. Not that real spring-like feel that we'd like to see out there for April. So just go ahead, let's take a look at those seven days of weather coming up for us here in the Burlington area again, starting on Friday. We're going to see a little bit of unsettled weather still sticking around, maybe a couple of showers around, but temperatures into the upper 60s, so pretty pleasant out there. As we get into the weekend, our temperature's going to cool down by about 10 degrees or so. So if you have any plans out there, having any Easter egg hunts on Sunday morning, make sure you bundle the kids up. It's going to be pretty chilly out there, probably down in the low to mid-30s in the morning before recovering to unfortunately only the mid-50s. So a cool day out there on Sunday. Now, as we get into next week and starting the work week out, we're going to see unsettled weather continue with us and we get in towards Tuesday. We're calling for some scattered showers that may be a steadier rain actually than that, especially early on Tuesday with temperatures only around 50. So a real chilly start to the work week. But then as we get towards the end of the week, our temperatures are going to hopefully by Wednesday get up to near 60 and looks like we may have a chance at hitting 70 by the time we get to Thursday. So everyone, get out there, enjoy the weather and have a great week.
Hi, I'm Amy Poehler and you're watching BCAT. Go Red Devils.
Hey, everyone. I'm Gretchen Carey and this is your Community Calendar. On April 20th, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m., the Burlington Public Library is having a virtual event called Financial Workshop: Protecting You and Your Assets. For more information and to register, go to burlingtonpubliclibrary.org. On April 23rd, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., the Stone Zoo will be having an event called Princess Day. For more information and to get tickets, go to the following website. Also, on April 23rd, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., the Made in Burlington Store will be having a Ramadan and Eid party. For more information and to sign up, go to madeinburlington-square-site.
Spring sports are on full swing at Burlington High and many teams are well into the regular season. We now go to Anthony Matos with the latest sports report.
Hey, everyone. I'm Anthony Matos and this is your weekly sports report. Softball and track are on the move as both teams remain undefeated. Lady Devils softball hosted Lexington on the 7th, where they won a one-sided affair of 14-2 against Winchester. On the 11th, the team won 12-0. On April 12th, Burlington traveled to Stonem for a matchup with the Spartans. The Ladies had a great game as they shut up the Spartans 15-0. The Lady Devils moved to 4-0 on the season and will have a home meet against Watertown on April 14th. As was taping, the game is still to be played. In addition, CC Mbimbo was named Boston Globe Schools E-Mass Softball Player of the Week. Congrats. Girls and Boys Track had an away meet in Watertown where both teams went home with a win. The Girls won their meet 86.5 to 49.5 and the Boys had another one-sided win, 101 to 35. The teams remain undefeated at 2-0 and will have home meets against Melrose on April 26th. Red Devil Baseball had an away game against the Lexington Minutemen on April 7th. The Devils came out of this one with a victory of 5-4. They had their home opener on April 12th against Stonem, where they won with the same score of 5-4. Burlington moves to 2-1, will have an away game in Watertown on April 14th. As was taping, the meet is still to be played. Lady Devils Lacrosse had an away game against the Reading Rockets on April 8th, where they lost 8-15. They had their first win of the season against Medford on April 11th with a score of 18-2. Next, they had a home meet against Lexington on April 13th. This was a very exciting game until the very end and we were there. Let's roll the highlights.
It was a beautiful day at Varsity Field when the Lady Devils Lacrosse team competed against the Lexington Minutemen. The game was back and forth throughout and in the first half, Burlington scored seven goals while the Minutemen had six. Seven to six at half. Things were neck and neck in the second half as the Devils and Minutemen kept it close. Another six goals by Burlington and another seven by Lexington. Near the end, the Devils had the lead 13-12. Then the Minutemen came back with just seconds to spare. 13-13, heading into overtime. It was a nine-second overtime as Burlington got a break due to a penalty on Lexington, setting them up to make the winning shot. 14-13, the final.
The Ladies moved to 2-3 on the season and will have an away game in Andover on April 19th. Red Devil Lacrosse had a home game against Reading on April 8th, where they lost 3-15. Burlington goes to 1-2 on the season while having an away game in Lexington on April 14th. As was taping, the game is still to be played. Lady Devils Tennis got their first win of the season in Stonem on April 7th, 5-0. The Ladies got another win on April 12th at Rahannis, 5-0 over Stonem. Burlington moves to 2-3 and will have a home meet against Melrose on April 14th. Red Devils Tennis had a home meet against Malden Catholic on April 7th, where they won 5-0. On April 12th, they had an away meet in Watertown, where they headed home with a victory of 5-0. The Boys moved to 3-2 and will have an away game in Melrose on April 14th. Both tennis teams' matches are still to be played. Red Devil Volleyball will begin the inaugural season on April 14th in Medford. As was taping, the match is still to be played. B News Sports reporter Robert Paris went to Vanilla Gym to check out new co-ed Unified Basketball Team.
Hey, everyone. I'm B News sports reporter Robert Paris. We're down here at the BHS Gym for the Burlington Athletic Program. Burlington Coed Unified Basketball is gearing up for their first game this season. Let's get to it. Down at the Vanilla Gym, athletes from the high school and lab program are working together for the Red Devils' first Burlington Unified Basketball Team. Unified sports join individuals with and without intellectual disabilities on the same team to promote inclusion through team practice and competition.
So this, we've wanted to do the unified the last two years, but the pandemic's gotten the way. It's the first year we could run it. Mr. Hart's been instrumental in getting it going. We've had, we're three weeks in now. We've had, this is, I think, our eighth practice or seventh practice and it's been, you know, it's a mix of my players and then our unified players. After that, end of the season, I was a little depressed coming in the gym, but this, these guys took